Please rise for them. Pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, approval of the minutes of October 20th, 2025. Commissioner Eulenkamp.
Second.
Commissioner Pierce. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Nothing under awards and proclamations, nothing under public hearing, nothing under bid openings? Any visitors or delegations, nothing there? We will go into commissioner portfolios and Commissioner Pierce.
Chief Bennett, what do you got?
Uh, we are starting to work on the process of getting our recording software switched over. The entire nation switched over from in person to nearest. So it's gonna be a month to possibly two month process. All of our software integrated, we're still gonna report through our software. It'll import right into there and it's just a different collection point that a lot of users can use. So we're in the process of doing that. We hosted a National Fire Academy class, decision making for the mission company officer. That was pretty good training. That was Saturday and Sunday this past weekend. And, uh, yeah.
Sid?
What I got for you?
How did the trick or treating, I saw you guys park the, one of the engines down.
Good, yep.
Appreciate you doing it.
Well, look, you guys.
The order forms for the light pole banners are now available online on the Facebook page. If you've been there, if not, you can pick them up at Mr. and Mrs. Jay's, the VFW, and there's one other place, where is it? Other radio station, Radio Works. Price is a hundred and five dollars per banner and it'll stay that way unless we get donations. I haven't received any yet from any local businesses from the letters they sent out. So we'll see how this goes. There was one other thing.
I think it's asking that, that went up.
Yeah.
What's the deadline to get?
Deadline is February 28th. So I get them to them, uh, to be printed, to be here before May 1st. Um, and I did make a call to, or sent the email to, um, to the city attorney about the, the nuisance letters and the blighted structured letters. City has to, had to work on them to get them changed, uh, to match the new ordinances and stuff. So, um, if we can get those pretty quick, so we can get these letters out to these folks. There's a few that are really taking advantage of, uh, of these cities.
Agree. How are we doing on that, Jason? Is that working, getting there?
Commissioner Pierce is speaking of our nuisances, not blighted structures.
Okay.
The letters that have been requested are revisions that include, the newly adopted ordinances, which really amount to including a penalty clause. Parts that are already cited in those letters will remain unchanged because they haven't been changed. So, um, the new letters will, like I said, include, reference to the municipal code saying the penalty for.
Yeah. But some should be ready to be penalized, right?
That, that's the penalty part of it. It has to be in there before we.
Okay.
Well, the penalty exists. You know, as soon as it was published in the newspaper, it's codified law for ordinance. Whether that appears in the letters, it's immaterial to enforcing the penalty.
Okay.
We can start hammering.
Well, yeah, okay. It's not the way I would put it, but.
Chief Bennett, can you send me an email or have it ready tomorrow? Maybe I can get it from you, the ones that have been already, that could be penalized, that have been warned over and over again, so we can have an idea of a commission to how, where we're at on that. And thank you, Jason.
I really think that once this starts and then word gets out, it, it's gonna be more effective without having to go that route.
Cause the one there on College Drive has put more stuff out on the Boulevard side there. They did every, every week, there's more added to. So I don't know if you've seen the notability scene they just put out.
Mm-hmm. There's more. No, on College Drive, yeah, on College Drive and Eighth.
So, um, yeah, I appreciate it. I just think we need to, we, we did all the work together. I think it needs to start being implemented and, uh.
I do agree.
Thank you, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Eulenkamp.
Mr. Grasscar, what do you got?
I have nothing under streets. When we turn ready, we're lights up and the lights have come.
Um, I know we talked about last time improvement to the alleyways where kind of businesses were having issues. How's that gone?
Um, we addressed five areas, four areas are in good shape. One area, I mean, it's that's obvious.
Think mosquito control is under control?
Yeah, I think so. So it sounds good.
Yeah, that's all.
Anything out the library or anything, or?
Uh, we have a meeting next week.
Okay.
No, yeah, the 13th.
Okay. All right, thank you. Commissioner Houch.
Dominic, got anything from the airport?
Uh, we got a new art truck a couple of weeks ago on Monday. Um, there's some work to be done to fix her up, but she will be a backup for, uh, what we have at the airport case of our current one goes down. Uh, numbers are really gone up. I think this month will shock a lot of people because I think it went up maybe around 15%? Maybe 20%? Um, then the last, I think that another thing that I know that people are worried about is SkyWest pulling out. Uh, from what my conversations with SkyWest themselves, they are not going to pull out. They're going to remain, they're gonna remain in service for the time being for the shutdown. And even TSA, you don't have to worry about TSA. Um, from my understanding, what I got told by the head guy of North Dakota and South Dakota is that if they don't show up, don't come back. So they'll be fine immediately if they don't show up. So.
Good information.
Have you heard any information on this government shutdown, how it's gonna affect the other, or like Denver or Minneapolis with the holidays travels and stuff?
Um, I have not. I score a B than anything.
Yeah, I just didn't know if you heard anything come down the, like.
Um, usually during the holiday season, there's a lot of delays, as you know. Um, even with Denver, I mean, Denver is one of the seven.
I was thinking about the shutdowns and the air traffic controllers and all that mess, you know? Seen if you heard anything.
I have not.
Thank you. Thanks, Dominic. Mike, anything from sanitation? Okay, thank you. Rob?
Uh, the planning commission will be meeting next Thursday, December 13th, there are a couple of applications. I've got one thing I have for the other day. Unless you have questions.
I have nothing, thank you.
Thank you.
I do have something for the library.
Okay.
I just, I brought it, it was in my email.
Sure.
Um, they are going to be hosting a holiday angel tree this year. Uh, November 1st to the 30th, so like Christian Public Library will have forms online and in person for parents and guardians to complete. They will also have a tree where the angels, uh, child's name information will be placed on a bookmark ornament where the sponsor can grab an angel from the tree and then shop for a $25 gift. They're requesting no gift cards. And then sponsor will return the gift wrapped, gift wrapped to the library, uh, by December 15th and the guardians can pick up the gifts from library through Christmas Eve, so.
Hmm, nice.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. Uh, under Commissioner Kanowski's, Mike? Okay, boy. Okay, chief?
Well, in line with Mike's comment about white stuff, I did hang my Christmas lights up.
I saw it on Facebook.
Did you see that?
Yeah, you know who else saw it? My wife.
Oh.
Yeah, you know, you know what? Yeah. You know what, you gotta.
Fire chief is one of them.
We gotta sort through all that mess that I got and untangle them.
But no, we, uh, I, I don't have much, uh, mayor, other than the bulletproof vests, the family way bulletproof vest partnership is a grant that we do every year. It was finally approved. Usually it's approved in, uh, in April, but it took all the way to November.
This is for new ones, are you saying?
Yeah, this, this helps us, uh, I guess to, uh, get back half the price of our vests that we spend on our officers.
This is the grant you're talking about?
Yes.
Okay.
Partnership grant, so, yeah, so it was nice that we finally got that approved. Everything with federal government is a little slow this, this, this year, so.
Do they have a life expectancy on those things?
Yeah, it's a five-year life. We tried to replace them about four years, so we didn't have that anyway.
How spendy are those?
The average round, we just did five vests and they were a little over eight thousand.
Oh, yeah.
And that includes, um, the carrier that goes with them and the other armor that's inside the vest, not just the, the solid shell.
They got new updated stuff in that armor stuff too, I suppose.
Correct, yeah. Well, and then next year we're gonna go through, it's called a hardwired, it's a vest that's even thinner, uh, but it's still a three A threat level. That's the highest level that you can have for a vest as far as what it will stop. But it's really a stiff vest, you just have to work it more. I guess it's the newest, newest vest that's out there, so.
Okay.
Yeah, so we're excited.
Good, well.
But that's all I got for you, unless we have.
Anybody have a question with the chief?
Uh, a couple of months back, I stopped by, one of the officers was showing me that gentleman for the the vehicle license plate identifier system thing, did anything ever come out of that?
Or the license plate reader, the L?
Yeah, the reader.
We decided not to go with that measure. The use that we were seeing out of it and the benefits, I think, outweighed the cost.
I heard something mentioned in the news about it the other day and it made me think about what you guys thought of it.
The, what we were looking at there was the actual LPR that was attached that's connected to our cameras that are in our vehicle. So it's kind of a mobile unit. Maybe a fixed camera or some, something in the future would be more viable, but again, more expensive, so.
Anything else? Spencer?
Yeah, uh, Mayor Mo members of the commission, just a, a few things that are coming up. Next meeting we'll have the city calendar, the 2026 city calendar for you guys to take a look at, review and give final approval to. And then, um, just talked with Mike and hoping to have the final reports on the buildings that we had the, the architects look at for the relocation, the police department. Open up full-fledged reports, um, between now and the next meeting, so hopefully we can discuss and present to you guys at the next meeting. And then as well as, um, need to renew the N D T C franchise agreement. That 15-year time window came up, so we need to update that, that'll take two readings, so we will have, uh, hopefully completed by the end of the year.
Okay.
And then, um, I have on there the N D Perz defined contribution, employee employer cost share. This is more of just a, as an FYI. When we originally presented to you guys the cost share for the defined contribution plan, just a reminder that there's two N D Perz plans, the benefit plan, which is like the pension, and then the defined contribution, which is similar to like a 401K. Um, but we had set it up, we had set it up so that if you were an employee and you're, you would be elected to take the full 3% match on the defined contribution plan, that the city would continue to fund your retirement up to that 10% level like we do our defined benefit. And then that would result in the employee only having to contribute to 5.19%. N D Perz was, uh, is of the view that, um, being as the employees don't have to contribute the same amount to their retirement, meaning if you're in the DC plan, at the end of the day, you really have to contribute 1% less. You know, when I viewed it, when they said, hey, it needs to be fair and equitable, I said, well, the city will contribute the same amount, um, and the employee will just cover the rest. And they're, they're of the view, uh, that we must, um, have the employees contribute the same, um, between the DB and the defined contribution plan. And so, um, if you're an employee in the defined contribution plan and you take the full 3% match instead of paying the 5.19%, you have to pay the 6.19% and then we have to, we as the city must reduce our contribution. So I just wanna know, let you know that there was a little bit of an administrative back and forth with N D Perz. I have the memo, but they provided this and there's about, so, four or five employees so far that had been open in the plan and so provided them the update that that was gonna change. So I wanted to make sure that you guys knew that.
No action necessary, huh?
No action necessary.
What was their feedback from?
They, you know, in, in the eyes of their administrative code, right, they suggested that we were discriminating, right, against employees with defined benefit versus the defined contribution. I certainly, I, I disagreed, right? We had our back and forth because I think the two plans are different. But if you're in the defined contribution plan, you're contributing less as a percentage of your salary than the defined benefit employees. And they needed to be fair and equitable, they said. I was under the impression that if the city is contributing the same percentage of your salary to your retirement plan, that is fair and equitable. Not how we see it.
Thank you.
Okay. Is that everything?
That is all, man.
Okay, thank you. Jason, have you got anything for us? We have some first readings.
Spencer mentioned the, uh, franchise degree with the N D T C. I'm working with Mike Grasscar, communicating unknown, so that's, um, upcoming and we'll have that, uh, future. Uh, the proposed ordinances are ones that are drafted by Mr. Oliverson and I just have a couple of things we will, a couple of secrets. That's what I have.
Okay, thank you, sir. Anybody have anything else or any other?
Did anything ever come about with your request for the, uh, the penalties for the parking that you sent out that email?
We're still working on that right now. Uh, we're, we're gonna be held to a $20 limit on that for all non-mute violation, that's state statute.
Okay.
So the city attorney, sailor and I are just, we're working on the fine.
Just wanna make sure it was still a motion, appreciate, thank you.
Chief, we'll move on. Uh, old business, the downtown parking. Mike, have you got any update on this?
I included your packet as a memo and a copy of the letter that was sent to downtown property owners. We sent out, uh, over a hundred and twenty letters. We have a copy of your packets, uh, to the downtown district property owners. We held their help input meeting last Tuesday, week ago. And then after all that work on the radio and a hundred and twenty letters, we had one person attend. So, uh, one person that attended is on the concern earlier was, uh, the potential for any delay and slow removal that can be signed. Chief, also, I have visited on the issue and it seems like the best course of action is to leave the signage and access throughout the, this winter and we'll revisit the issue in the spring.
Do you want some action with the commission to approve that, or?
Uh, we're not changing anything.
Okay.
At this point. And we did discuss, we have to have, uh, maybe some better communication between public works and PD. So when there is actual work occurring downtown, uh, public ways of contact, uh, PT might show that we're aware of it. Other than, uh, better vehicles can be addressed and support my group clients or, or anything. Chief, that summarize where we're at, because we appreciate you working with us on that, like. Same is true. That's all after that, much as questions were there. I really thought based on the number of letters that we sent, I expected to have some additional input. You know, cause people, they can be, slow removal better, can we do maintenance better? Cause it was not only the parking, we were trying to get feedback on a few different items. So all we can assume is that we're doing everything right and everybody has the trust in us.
Until, until you do it. I mean, you know.
Exactly, right.
Chief?
I always remember improvement will strike this.
Well, thank you. We'll move on, consent agenda, we have nothing. So now we'll go into new business, uh, the equipment replacement plan. Is that Spencer?
Yeah, Mayor Mo members of the commission, the equipment replacement plan reflects the conversation that we've been having over the last, boy, five months throughout the budget process. So the equipment replacement plans, they, um, they reflect the 2026 city budget as well as, um, you know, it's kinda hard to kinda move the vehicles from one department to another, um, just like on the stretch and communicate it, um, wisely. And so I think, you know, when we talk about the sharing amongst the vehicles, it's easiest to have that during the budget cycle in advance of the next year and we can move those things around quite easily. Um, nothing really, um, shocking in the equipment replacement plan. Uh, one, one thing to note though is I would, the commission's going to, when we, when we transition our sanitation operations from the manual to the automated and we get new cans and we make adjustments to our rates and fees, we are going to have to be cognizant to change, adjust the rates and fees so that we can accommodate the need, the equipment needs long-term for that department as they change. Um, because we're gonna be replacing automated systems now, um, which are much more expensive vehicles than obviously the ones that we're looking to replace right now. And, um, you know, we were going through the equipment replacement plan and we really need to save more money every year so that we can handle those larger equipment costs moving forward. So when we present you the rates and fees, I think number one, as staff, we need to do a good job of thinking about the sanitation department long-term needs and we wanna have a conversation with that, about that with you guys, and so we'll probably have to have a detailed conversation in future budgets, budget cycles and when we remodel the rates and fee structure for sanitation so that we can meet our needs long-term. Um, but looking at the, uh, the needs, that was the best projections that Corey, Mike and I felt that we could provide you at this time.
Still any big estimate to win that, uh, the new, most, one-armed bandit one that will close, take effect, just there?
Probably will, uh, in August. We may, uh, transition to the, uh, new cans, market comply for that. Soon we have a good handle on that for every week.
And then the, the individuals will have to pick up those cans or are they gonna be delivered to their spouse? That's what I thought, I just couldn't remember.
They'll be delivered and then they'll have to track that, it'll be a specific, uh, barcode or number for that can in my resume. They'll have to track all of them, make sure. It'll be a good audit, I mean, I think we do a pretty good house of audits, but some people that have implemented that all know that there were people that were being in camp service that have been having problems. There were some that had problems, you know, were paying for service, uh, for city and service. So this is in the process there. I don't expect that's gonna be a great number for us. And then there will be just an awareness in giving scans when it, uh, there's a certain distance, a three foot distance around that can, if you're bothered. So that the arm can actually reach out, grab the can. That can be right next to a garage, be right next to a public pool, things like that. So, uh, yeah, there'll be a lot of attention as we would culture.
There's not much for options in some of these alleys though. How's that gonna work? You know, being against something. Some people have fences or something, but there's not, you know, what about those?
There'll have to be some room around that, because we're going on those arms to get pushed in.
Yeah.
There's.
Gonna be some issues, I'm afraid.
You know, I've driven in other communities that have alley pickup and large cans and it works. That's, that's specific truck that we had specified is that particular truck because it doesn't have the large overhead and it's easy to maneuver and pick up cans from both sides of the alley with long paths.
It's gonna be a learning curve for everybody.
Yep.
I think it's gonna be unofficial to say residents that can.
Okay. Any action necessary, or?
We would request approval.
Oh, okay.
Make a motion to approve this presented?
Commissioner Pierce?
I'll second.
Commissioner Houch? Any discussion? No discussion? Yeah, this is, should be a roll call, it's finance.
This, we're not buying it.
Okay, all right, then all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Second item is a first reading of ordinance 1025, section 1-7-010 on competitive bidding requirements. It's just a first reading, uh, no action required, but are there any questions over?
If you want me to provide a briefing on all three, I can do that.
You sure can.
Um, so all three of these are in, are interrelated and really it's the third ordinance that results in the significant changes to our ordinances and that requires that the, uh, the previous two ordinances be just dramatically changed. So I'm just gonna talk about the third one. In our ordinance is previously any city property that we sold above $2,500 needed to be publicly bid. For example, the land that we had in that acreman acres area, we had that land and we needed to publicly bid that per our ordinances. And if you go and you look around other communities, they have ordinances that permit the city commission of more leeway and more judgment in determining how to dispose of city property, whether that be equipment or land, real property as they say. So the first ordinance change is increasing the threshold on the, on the bidding requirement from $2,500 to $5,000. Twenty-five hundred was the number set in 1987 and I did the inflation calculator today, that would be over $7,000. So really $5,000 is, doesn't even get us to the equivalent value, um, from, uh, well over 30 years ago. So that was, that's the first change. And then really, at the end of the day, it's, it's, um, section three on that, uh, third ordinance, 1.070603, where, and I'll just read it. Upon the finding that it is in the best interests of the city of Devil's Lake or that a substantial justification exists, the governing body of the municipality may, uh, by resolution enter into such purchase, sale, exchange or other agreements for the purchase, acquisition, sale, lease, dedication or conveyance of any real property as the governing body of the municipality deems appropriate and may waive and circumvent any formal bidding requirements for the sale or purchase of real property required under state law or local ordinances so long as the transaction terms of the subject property are reasonable under the market conditions at the time of the contemplated real property transaction. So, um, for example, if the city own land and there's, uh, a developer or a project that the city really wants to get across the finish line and this, uh, you know, potential buyer or person that wanted to conduct the project was willing to pay, um, what, you know, maybe a third-party broker would determine as a reasonable price for the property that you guys could engage in such, uh, an agreement. Um, rather than just blindly put it up to public bidding and see what happens. You know, I look Fargo, Grand Forks, Watford City, Williston, Bismarck, Mandan, they all have ordinances that give the city commission a little bit more leeway. And so this would provide that ability to the city commission. You don't have to, you can, you guys always have the right to publicly bid anything that you want to. But if you did want to engage in an agreement, uh, for the sale of property, they could. Um, this very much reflects the city of Williston's ordinances in combination with, um, the city of Watford Cities. You'll see that there's further sections that, you know, in public interest, if there are members of the city commission or city employees that are involved with the purchase of that property, that there's that increased threshold where I, um, see that there, the city commission would need to be unanimous in their agreement to sell the property without bidding it, um, which could be a tough threshold. Um, if city employees and city commissioners are involved. So really kinda takes the, uh, really makes sure that things are on the up and up, um, in regards to that. And, uh, mayor, I, I, I think I gave a, a fair, fairly, um, formidable summary, but I'll turn it over to the city attorney for any comments on the legal, um, considerations that the city commission should take in reviewing the ordinance.
I agree with everything that Spencer said. I'll just add that these are compliant with state law, all three ordinances, they're comparable to the ordinances adopted by, uh, other cities in North Dakota. What I'm saying is, uh, this is what's being done, uh, other, other communities. And it gives the city commission greater flexibility and more options to sell property. It's the first reading for all. It's the first reading for all three ordinances. No action required.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. So the first reading on 1025, uh, any questions? If not, we'll move on to the next one. First reading of ordinance 1026, section 107.202, procedure. Any questions regarding that? If not, we'll move on to the next one. First reading of ordinance 1027, section 107.060, the conveyance of sale, lease or disposal of property. Okay. If there's no questions on that, we'll move on to the next item. Next item is to return to, request to return Roundhouse Lot to City is known as the 322 Levin Street Northwest. Rob?
So, uh, in the Roundhouse development, the city sold lots that were there, $2,000. Uh, within the warranty due for the sale of those lots or the requirement that they have to be available within two years. Uh, if they weren't then, the curving, that indicates that the property would be returned back to the city. Uh, and that the $2,000 will be forfeit. Andrew Johnson has a lot of the address located indicated. He's requested to return it back to the city. Uh, as there's another potential interested party to develop that lot uh, and have requested to have, uh, be reimbursed for his initial investment minus the filing fees. Historically, uh, that's the way it's been done by the city, even though the curving indicates otherwise. So, uh, the proposal is just to take the, uh, the lot back uh, and then assist to determine whether or not there's going to be a compensation provided for reclaiming that lot.
Do you have a reference on how many we have?
I've, there's, I was only able to find two that were reclaimed.
I remember when they had something like that.
And both of them.
Were reimbursed?
Reimbursement provided. Uh, but there are only two instances that I found where that existed. So it's, and then once we get this done, then we'll, we'll do the, go through the due process regardless of how it will play out. And I would expect that at the next commission meeting, I'll have a proposal to resell that lot.
Well, that's delicious.
I'll make a motion to approve sale back to the city for the $2,000 less the filing fees.
And reimburse, reimburse them.
Yeah.
Okay. Motion on the floor? Is there a second?
One second.
Commissioner Pierce?
If this happened in 2018, you know, two years, why are we just getting it now? Why are we just getting it back now?
It's just having it on the.
Oh, okay.
We probably should have taken action on this.
Yeah.
Okay.
There's no tracking on that sort of, yeah.
Right.
Okay.
And, and I think historically too, that when it's happened before and it's when another party became interested, then it's like, okay, someone else wants to do something. You're not. So we're going to go through the process of.
There's no backdoor taxes, nothing, no links against the property or anything?
No, and even then there's no, nothing that's, that's, it's all paid and caught up on the tax. Uh, I'm not sure on the special assessments, but.
Yeah, please.
And typically then, I, uh, this would be for the next time if we were to sell it to another owner.
That's, yeah, I just wanted.
But should these, if there's specials against it, it should, he, as long as he was owning, then he should be liable for that. So that motion should probably be contingent upon anything that he's responsible for up to date. So his reimbursement would be.
Anyways, because isn't that part of your real estate taxes annually? A portion of the special assessments?
Yeah.
So as long as the real estate taxes are paid up, there shouldn't be anything back on the special assessments, right?
But it can still be unpaid.
Right. Which would now go to the new.
No, well, as of the date to sale, that would transfer. But whatever is prior to that, it should be under this owner. If there's anything against it.
Right. So like any unpaid dollars, I mean, that's.
Yeah. But it, we should hold that, you know, out of the check reimbursement, whatever is owed on it, right?
Yeah, well, we will, uh.
But the motion should spell out that, right?
We could just make a motion to table it some next.
Yeah, I mean, we can just, Rob and I, we can just talk interdepartmentally and if there's delinquency on, we would just take that out of that.
Okay, but we do have a motion on the floor here at the moment.
Is it just one?
Huh?
Is it just one motion?
Yeah. No, we got a second. Yeah.
You have a second.
Yeah, we do have a second. We're in discussion.
I, I just feel like I'm obligated to say this. So if we're going to put in the contract that the $2,000 is forfeited. Right? And I understand the actions of past commissions for putting, putting you guys, you guys are decent. You know, you're, it's a good human beings, right? And you want to try to be fair and consistent. Um, but really the incentive structure right now that we've created by not making people forfeit the $2,000 is, hey, we're just going to hold the $2,000. You can sit on the land for as long as you want until we find somebody else that wants to build on it. Given the fact that you haven't done anything in seven years with it and it's not going to cost you anything. So the, so really, I mean, if I was, if I was somebody that was in the business, I'd offer to buy all of these lots for all the remaining ones for $2,000, knowing I'm going to get my money back. And I can just sit on it for as long as I want until somebody else says, oh, I might want to build a house on it too.
Okay, now are we done with them now? I think this is the last one, wasn't it?
There's still, there's still another lot that's vacant right now.
Is it owned by, city still owns it? Okay.
So I'm, I'm just, that's the incentive structure that's being created by doing this right now. And I, I wish previous commissions would not have done that because it puts you guys in a tough spot.
Well, but. If we're going to create. Only one left. I hate to be that guy now, you know what I mean?
You make a good, you make a good.
But it's very good point.
Yeah.
And with the next, with this lot potentially being turned and sold to somebody else, that's going to be part of the warranty. Are we going to have that requirement in there now? Are we going to stick to it?
You know, that's, that's something now, now that the points were brought up. Yeah.
I, I don't think the past commissions have ruled on it. Did you guys any favors with this? I'm just trying to say that.
Yeah, that's well received. Yep, I agree with you there.
Do you still stand on your motion, Rob?
Yep.
Okay. Any further discussion on this? Okay. Let's do a roll call.
Uh, Christian Hosh.
Aye.
Mr. Eulken.
Aye.
Mr. Pierce?
No.
President Moe?
All right. Motion carries, but I do agree that that is a, was a good point to be brought up without a doubt, but.
Yeah. There are special.
Yeah. Okay. Next item on the agenda, citizen comment. We have nothing. Informational items, nothing. We will now pause to do executive session. Uh, the city attorney, the city administrator, the former Devils Lake director Brady Ash. Uh, the commission will now break to go into executive session. And, uh, after executive session, we'll return and continue the meeting with the approval of the bills. At this time, we will now break and I'll read this before we go. The Devils Lake City Commission will convey an executive session. This meeting is on November 3rd, 2025 to discuss pending legal matters related to the mortgage between the city of Devils Lake Building Authority and Kojak Snack Ed Pack LLC at the property with the legal description of outlet 390014 of Lot 1 Pasta Acres Subdivision Block 2, replat the Devils Lake Industrial Park, the Devils Lake Ramsey County, North Dakota. Okay, so we will now break for executive session. All others were welcome to leave.
The live stream is going to continue stream because we are going to come back.
Okay, live stream, okay.
You guys are important.
I'm the first.
Yep.
...
...
...
You want to add this for chicken nuggets?
Oh, god dang it anyhow.
Kanozki misses meeting on purpose, I bet.
Yes, we still roll up.
Okay, once everybody's in place. I will now reconvey the Devil's Lake City Commission meeting to accept a motion to approve the payment of the list of bills as submitted. I got a motion from Commissioner Eulenkamp. And a second from Commissioner Pierce. Any further discussion? No further discussion, roll call.
Aye, Mr. Eulenkamp. Mr. Pierce.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Unless there's any other business come before the commission, the meeting is adjourned.